Good evening, everybody. It is July 11th, 2025. This is the school committee meeting, and we start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social-emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our call to order this evening includes opening procedures, agenda review and adoption, time for public participation. Our reports and presentations include the recognition of retirees, Ashland Middle School Improvement Plan, Ashland High School Improvement Plan, and handbook changes, warrant approvals, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report. Our action items for discussion, updates, and votes include nutrition services, proposed meal cost increase, superintendent's evaluation, and the following policies: BB School Committee Legal Status, BBA School Committee Powers and Duties, BBBA/BBBB School Committee Member Qualifications and Oath of Office, GCBA Professional Staff Salary Schedule, GCBB Employment of Principals. The second read and vote, including JH Student Absence and Excuses, JHD Exclusions and Exemptions from School Attendance, JJC Student Discipline, JJCFA Prohibition of Hazing, JJCFAE Hazing, JJCFFB Bullying Prevention, JIH Searches and Interrogations, JII Student Complaints and Grievances. The consent agenda will include approval of gifts and donations, minutes from May 28th, 2025. And then I will move to enter into executive session under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent of Schools Jim Adams, Ashland High School Deans, Director of Social-Emotional Learning Jen Taylor, Director of Pittaway, Director of Student Services Brittany Hawkins, Ashland Middle School Principal Erin LaChapelle, Director of English Language Acquisition Christie Arnold, and Ashland High School Principal Kelly St. Kerr, or to conduct collective bargaining with the intent of not to return to public session. So, does everyone agree with the order of business this evening?
Yes.
And I see that you are all here, as am I.
Madam Chair, can I ask that we add a track-and-field overnight field trip that just came about on Sunday? We didn't have the opportunity to get it on the agenda. They're going to, they have a relay team who will be going to Nationals, and that was not, we couldn't foresee that happening until-
It fits into the category of, it's kind of emergency but unforeseen, and, okay. Is everybody on board with-
I just want to put that in, we'll talk about it.
Do we have-
You do, it's in the folder.
It's in the folder.
Correct.
Okay. And you have a sense of where you're gonna add that?
I'll just do it right at the end.
You'll do it when you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll start by asking if there are any members of the public, either here or online, that want to give public comment. And seeing none, we will start with our recognition of retirees. I'll start by just saying, we had a chance to meet downstairs, but I, for the people who are watching, I want them to have an opportunity to know that we have a roomful of amazing people that have worked in this district for a combination of probably hundreds of years. And your dedication to our kids, our students, the staff that you've worked with, the people that you have supervised and have supervised you, we're really grateful to you, and we wish you all the best in your next steps. We hope you really enjoy your summer and whatever is coming next for you. And we're gonna invite the principals up so that we can recognize you individually.
Good evening. Our first retiree from the middle school is Mary Lou DiStefano. Mary could not be here with us tonight, but I still would like to say a few words about her. Mary Lou began teaching in 1985 and spent the last 13 years with us in Ashland, where she has supported our English language learners with incredible heart. She talks often about the joy of helping her students acquire the languages they need to succeed, and the pride of seeing them grow and thrive long after middle school. Mary Lou's care and compassion have made a lasting difference, and we wish her nothing but sunshine and relaxation as she heads for the beach in retirement. Thank you, Mary Lou.
I want to say one more thing. We do have prizes for all of you, but they weren't ready in time. So my understanding is that the last faculty meeting, hopefully, they will be available, and we will have something for you to remember us.
I'm Barbara Charity, it is in Perry for Mendez School. She is one of our, the Danteyam teachers. She's been with us in the past 12 years. What I will present the most fondly about working as her is her dedication and passion to working in the kids, and her ability to advocate, and she really were the lens. We do remember her every customer's background, a lot of deep discussions with her over the years, and I truly enjoyed working with her, marvelous, brought on since here, to recently her birth grandchild. Sure she feels a lot to try and get out to the earth with it.
Thanks, Jen.
Next, we have Jean Murphy. Jean is here. She is one of our ESPs. She served as a building sub and was in that role for 10 years, and then started working before in Perry, the three, and is dedicated, wonderful person, constantly puts children first in her line of sight, which is working with people. And you can always count on her to do anything that you need her to do in the building, and we will deal with her retirement for many years to come. She plans to travel next year, so we're very excited for her, but it is a giant goal for us.
Next, we have Keith Truesdale from the middle school. He has spent 30 years in education, including 13 at Ashland Middle School. He has always cared deeply about doing right by his students, and knowing he made a positive impact on their lives and families is what he's gonna hold the most dear to him. He'll miss the strong bond of the Team Purple crew. Thank you, Keith, for your decades of service. AMS will miss his presence, insight, and his quiet commitment to excellence. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jean Ernest. Jean started teaching special education in 1985 and joined the Ashland Middle School team 15 years ago. Jean's journey included time off raising her children before returning to the classroom with her energy and passion. She values student success and the lifelong friendships that she's made along the way. Jean is most excited to spend time with her newborn twin grandchildren, and we're excited for her to join that next chapter. AMS will miss her warmth, dedication, and positivity. Thank you, Keith.
Hi, everybody. I was gonna say, these two are gonna hit hard for me because we all pretty much started together. Jonathan joined Ashland in 2006 as a special education liaison, which has been his role since then. In his 42 years as a special educator, his highlights have included teaching a language-based program that he developed with speech with all of the share in Ames, and then continuing to teach reading and English as the need for some separate student support for the high school increased. He has always been willing to jump in where needed, and I've always appreciated him for saying, "Whatever you need me to do." He has coached a variety of teams over the years, but he's most proud of his time to the middle school track and cross-country teams. They made an amazing video for him just last week. He shared that working at Ashland High School meant having the best and most supportive work atmosphere of his career, and he has always been the consummate team player, going with the flow. He will be my-
And Mark Steidels. Mark joined Ashland making a career change after a 20-year career in a variety of jobs in the tech sector and a year at Hopeville High as a long-term sub. He started with us in the academic center, which was the transition from the high school evening program that we had 20 years ago. He moved to the history department full-time in 2008. He taught primarily world history, which is a ninth-grade class, but also had the opportunity to teach many elective courses to our upper classroom. And I know that many of them chose those, another chance to have him as a teacher. Mark coached several teams over the years, including indoor track, girls JV lacrosse, and mainly football. And he shared that he considers the players and coaches of the football team an extension of his own family, and carries those special memories of Jake Silver and PJ, two very special players that we have lost. Mark is known for the relationships he's built with his students and families. Students in his class know he cares and keeps in touch with him for years later. Mark has had some challenges with his health over the last couple of years, but never ever fails to stop and ask a colleague, myself included, how they are doing. The high points of his teaching career have been the relationships that he's formed with his colleagues, his students, and met wonderful Ash-
Peter Allen, English teacher, has spent all 22 years of his teaching career in Ashland, bringing a thoughtful, steady presence to Ashland Middle School. A lover of English since his own school days, Peter found deep satisfaction in watching students grow as writers. He often reflects on how welcoming the staff were when he began teaching at age 40, and how fortunate he feels to have landed in such a strong, supportive community. I will miss walking down the eighth-grade hallway and hearing him read aloud to students into his microphone. In retirement, Peter plans to travel the world, meet interesting people, and finally read the books he's had set aside for so long. We thank him for his years of wisdom, passion for English, and commitment to our students.
For the next two wonderful women, Donna Lowell is on-
She's on.
She's on. I'd love for her camera-
Hi, Donna.
A huge congratulations to Mrs. Lowell on her upcoming retirement for more than 25 years of invaluable service to the preschool community. From a parent, to an ESP, to an administrative assistant, Donna has been the heart of our program, always ready to support students, families, teachers, administrators, and myself. And I know I have a lot of crazy projects that I throw at her. As an admin assistant, no two days are ever the same. Her daily work was ever-changing and continues to be, finding coverage, providing classroom coverage, setting up appointments, managing preschool registration, enrollment, tuition payments, working on the budget, fielding all of our pit crew projects, and the list goes on and on. She has always met every challenge with dedication and a can-do spirit. Her commitment extends far beyond the office, enriching the lives of our pit crew and the students throughout her care and leadership. We are deeply grateful for her tireless efforts to strengthen our systems and support to make everyone successful. Wishing all the best in her well-deserved next chapter once we get through-
Next up is Amy, incredible words about Amy's 27 years in the Ashland preschool. Everyone who knows her affectionately calls her Mrs. B, and she has always put her students, their families, and her colleagues at the forefront of every decision in all of her many projects and hours at school. She is the master of our self-created curriculum map and consistently provides guidance to any new teachers and staff as it relates to lesson planning and assessments. She keeps us all on track. She always brings joy and a playful attitude to school. Anyone who's gone through a rival dismissal sees her iconic hat collection, her fun costumes, and imaginative classroom themes and open house displays. If you've ever had a child attend to Ashland preschool, you've heard or saw her incredible displays as she turned her classroom into animal habitats, Dr. Seuss's Whoville, or even a construction zone, just to name a few. We're deeply grateful for her lasting impact on students and the program, and wish her all the best in the next chapter. And whenever she's ready, we'll have a part-time music gig for her, "Music with Mrs. B."
Thank you, Amy.
Has been all 27 years of her career in Ashland, teaching at Warren, Mendez, and Ashland Middle School. She had the unique opportunity to watch students develop as readers and writers from grade two all the way through grade eight. Amy has loved seeing her sixth graders grow into confident eighth graders, and even more so when they come back to visit from high school. She spoke recently about how much she'll miss her colleagues, and even how close she came to changing her mind about retiring after our staff retirement breakfast last week. In retirement, she's looking forward to sleeping in, spontaneous adventures, and especially spending more time with her two young grandchildren. AMS thanks Amy for her dedication and care.
That's it. We wish you all the best. Thank you for joining us, and to those of you who couldn't make it, hopefully, we'll get a chance to see you at some point. Good luck, enjoy, and you don't have to stick around. Woo-hoo! That's what happens, right? Crazy. All right, Ms. Erin, you're back.
Great. So, the middle schools, the middle school's school improvement plan is definitely a work in progress. I inherited a plan that was pretty complete. So, the site council and faculty and staff and I have really been working on what our priorities will be for the coming years. Some of the items that you'll see on here that are not highlighted are things from the previous plan that will continue and are constantly being looked at in our eyes. But the things that are highlighted in yellow are really the objectives and action items that we're focused on over the next few years. So the first ones being the change to the math placement for students and the opening of CP2 geometry to freshmen. This freshman class is the first class that had that opportunity. So definitely spending time analyzing the data from that cohort of students after next year when they go into Algebra II, to make sure that what we're doing at the middle school is preparing them for that transition. So looking at alignment of the math curriculum as we do every year, but really looking at that cohort as they transition into the Algebra II quarter classes next year, excuse me, to make sure that they feel prepared and that the teachers feel they're prepared, and having some vertical discussions between the high school and the middle school to make sure if there are areas or gaps that we need to address, that we're aware of those. Additionally, because of the change in our schedule and discovery no longer being a component of the day where students will have the opportunity for math enrichment, we are making some changes to our accelerated math program in just the pacing and kind of depth and breadth that it needs to cover each year. So we were able to have students move from, you know, Math 6 to Accelerated 7 by using discovery in the past as kind of a gap close for some things. And because Mark will do that, the math team is really working on, how are we gonna address those transitions and be able to still make those jumps for students who show they're ready to make the jump to accelerated level, whether it be the seventh-grade level or eighth-grade level, and prepared? So our teachers are working on both identification of students within this whole year itself and the ability to move at the quarter mark, the mid-year mark, and be able to close some gaps within the year itself, as well as putting together in return opportunities that students will have, so that there's no closed gap, to be able to not allow students to have the movement that we currently have. So that is kind of the first focus and priority area that we have that's highlighted. The next one is with the equity teamwork in Project 351. So the last school committee, I believe it was the last school committee meeting, the playbook students came and presented, and Ms. Mukuchi, who's kind of the leader of the playbook initiative at our school, as well as the students who were just being in that. We left that last session really wanting to find a way to be able to do more of those workshops throughout here and to be able to hit more of our student volume with them. So it's gonna be a focus of ours on how we do that, how we deliver that information, really figuring out a plan that sixth, seventh, and eighth graders each year have some exposure to talking about challenging topics and learning about, and having a safe space to talk about language and things that they're hearing and learning how to be a student. So that is definitely a focus that we're working on. And then, under, yeah, that one. So looking at our discipline data and really looking at some ways that we can use some more restorative practice in the middle school, as well as revision of our PBIS programming. It's needed, it's wanted by staff, for sure, wanting to have just a clear outline and articulation of actions and kind of prescribe what should be the steps we're taking for certain infractions, given that there isn't really consistency right now in how those things are handled, as well as ways that we can use more positive behavior and incentives for middle school students. We have locker cash, and they go to the store a couple times a year, but even the way that the locker cash is used and handed out is inconsistent. Students are showing up to the store with hundreds of dollars of locker cash and can use it, and then finding ways to provide positive experiences for them that they can be working towards and seeing how their behavior is moved towards, you know, positive instead of just negative and consequence. So looking at what other middle schools are doing and reprogramming our PBIS programming and our motto with that will be a work in progress, but something that PBIS team is definitely behind changing. And then, probably the biggest ones, I don't know if anyone knows, we have a new schedule. Only been here a few times about the whole campus here, but number one is gonna be, while we have the logistics mapped out now and the schedule, I can say knock on wood, pretty definitively set, it's gonna be a continual monitoring of how that's going and what is, what's the data showing, as well as what is anecdotally, how are people feeling about it? And so that's gonna just be an ongoing priority area for us over the next few years as we look at that transition. Additionally, an area that the site council really started probably more toward the last quarter of the year and the faculty started work is, one of my most kind of glaring observations this year was our grading practices at the middle school. So we've had conversations with site council, I keep going to Mars and Kishis on site council, but I'm not supposed to say council, but with faculty and parents and site council about what middle school grading looks like. Do we feel like the grades that students are receiving are representative of their learning? Are we taking too much into account other factors? We've had conversations about FIBAC, we've had conversations about pre-test, we've had conversations about late work. So we have a lot of work to do. The number one priority is to have consistency in a grade level among the two teams, to make sure that there is no difference among what Team Yellow and Team Orange are doing, so that there isn't that, well, this team does this and this team does that. But what we really want to develop is an aligned progression where, as students are getting to that eighth-grade year, what I hear from parents is that the jump from eighth to ninth is significant in how their students are graded, what their grades look like. So not making that jump into the high school as big for them from the grading standpoint, and really giving our eighth graders specifically a strong understanding of the weighting of grades and how grades are calculated. So looking at a progression from six to eight, that takes them from standard-based grading in elementary to grading in the middle school, but having it progress from, whether that's a change in weighting, or FIBAC, all of the things are on the table. We are at the very surface level, just kind of looking at what we currently do, but it will be a focus of ours over the next year with hope of some consistency and presentation for changes for the 26, 27 school year. Additionally, we are looking to identify skills per grade level, soft skills, current skills that students, by the end of sixth grade, we hope all our sixth graders can do X by seven, by eight, and so something we're also hoping to be able to work and end up some sort of rubric or measurement for that we can say this is what we're hoping to see from our students. Those are our big priorities.
Awesome. Questions? Comments? Seems like we've seen you a lot this year. Yeah. I think you've been questioned over many of those things already by us throughout the year, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm so supportive.
Go ahead, Kelly. Oh, you are waiting for Jim?
I think you have a copy of any adjustments we made to the plan as 2023 to 2026. So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things that we did this year and let you know what we're hoping to be working on as we round out this plan. Starting with, in the highlighted areas are the kind of the things that we need to continue. There's a lot of things in there, but the things that we know we need to really focus on next year. But kind of under equity come, one of the things that I highlighted under equity and curriculum is we spend a lot of time examining the current course weighting system and considering whether or not we should unweight courses. The council, two meetings ago, kind of came to the conclusion after, you know, a year and a half, almost two years of looking at this, is that we really want to go back and really look at what we're trying to get out of this conversation. I think the site council recognizes or feels that the way we weight courses is very much an internal process at the high school, that we understand how it impacts students moving on from here, or may not impact students. But we were really feeling like some of those things that we wanted to get at in terms of looking at student stress, helping support students to take classes that were relevant to them or of interest, making sure that we were recognizing all students, that there often isn't that very much difference between those students, they're number two or number 10 in the class. We kind of wanted to, and we felt like this wasn't the time for the high school to be having a conversation. So we are gonna spend some time next year really looking at, how do we want to address some of those topics that we spent a lot of time talking about this year? Which goes back to kind of some of our next steps, or really that pre and post-evaluation of students growth across nine through 12, and how are we really focusing on our students getting what they need, and how are we recognizing that growth? Both in equity and in curriculum, we're gonna continue to focus on, how are we really looking at school and career options for students and making sure that we are preparing students for what their next steps are? We've had them there for a couple of years to be looking at the innovation grant, and so hope to look further into that next year and have that be a focus. Some of our other successes this year, when I think of equity and social-emotional learning and curriculum, we had a successful first year implementing the right program. That was one of the things that we had talked about, is implementing it to kind of the needs academic and social-emotional needs of all students. So we had a great year working in consultation with the national program. We had a consultant that works with us, works with the staff in the program twice a month. I join those meetings once a month. She joins in person once during the school year. We had two meetings, we brought in the entire counseling team as well, and they were saying, et cetera. Really talked about, you know, this is what the national model is like, and what we're doing at Ashland. And we really did feel like, you know, moving from our academic foundations program that we have and building that with the right program, we were in a really good space to get this program rolling, and we're excited to keep building that. So really kind of jumping down to more of the things under social-emotional learning, we also just wrapped up the work we've done with the JED program, and just received their post-assessment in May. So, to share that, first with the JED team and then with the greater school community, but it was some great feedback, kind of how they're also, their program that helps schools really look at what they're doing for social-emotional learning and supporting mental health and suicide prevention. And they came, they did a pre-assessment of students and staff, December, January 22, 23, and then post this past fall, students and staff again were serving. And our numbers were great in terms of some of the increases we made in making sure that students are more connected in school, that staff understand what they need to do if there is students struggling, a variety of topics. But they also provided a lot of great recommendations that I hope we can continue to implement. And some of them are things that we had already been talking about, some of these action steps are from their to most strategic plan. are from their to master key to plan. I think just looking at kind of resource management, I highlighted that we spent a lot of year, a lot of time this year working on the safety protocols and, you know, feel pretty comfortable and confident with all students, students and staff making those processes.
Is that been off the whole time? All right. You know, one of the things that we've been looking at from that standpoint, we had some action items around trainings and practices and the use of technology and our focus this year was, was on AI. And I'll talk a little bit about what was proposed by our teachers with the student handbook, but that's been a big discussion and we anticipate that being an ongoing discussion next year in site council. We've had some conversations about whether or not we need to have, you know, have it be part of faculty handbook or those types of things, how we're using AI. And you will hear in a few minutes about for students. And again, I already mentioned that we, you know, resource management is also exploring the innovation careers pathways. We are adding an additional AP computer science class this year at the high, next year at the high school. And I think computer science is really a great place for us to start if we're able to jump into that program.
AP physics as well.
AP physics as well, yes. We haven't had AP physics in a couple of years. We had over 18 students do it through VHS this year. So we had stopped offering at the high school because there hadn't been an interest. And so we have classes next year coming back. You taking it?
I was one of the 18. I took it this year.
Oh, all right. And so I also wanted to highlight some of the community service. There's some action steps under curriculum there. You know, we were able to offer two community service days again for students this year. It looked at some of the numbers of where our kids are now without that requirement. And we have right now about 60% of the class of 2026 has some community service, has done some service that is being tracked by our service advisor, and 75% of the class of 2027. So I think, you know, one of the things that we were recognizing was wanting to make sure we're providing opportunities within the school day, which we have been able to do, and that kids are still doing it for their genuine interest. Many kids are still doing it for their genuine, genuine interest in service. And I think those are going to be the highlights. Questions?
Comments? Now, Mark, you sit on the high school site council. So, and most of us, if not all of us, right, take part in somebody's site council. So throughout the year, we've been sharing, you know, little tidbits.
It's been valuable to have Mark there a few times.
Awesome. And he's been filling us in when, when we've had time to fill each other in on what's going on. I know, Erin, you've been here several times talking about the schedule and hearing our questions. So I think we're good unless anybody has any comments.
All right.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, I still have the handbook.
The handbook, yeah.
So not a lot of change for the handbook this year. The one thing that's already in there, we like, that highlighted one line that is something that we don't use very often, but we wanted to make sure that if we are in the situation of having to search a student for a suspected infraction and that student refuses that search, we just wanted to add specific language, it was a little vague before about that that student could still be consequenced for what we are suspecting and needing to search them for if they, and nine times out of 10, that is not an issue. But we tightened up some language last year in terms of students being searched if, say, two or three are in a bathroom stall together or, and so we often, we have run into a few times where students are not compliant with that search. And we want to just change the vague language to be more specific to, okay, we do suspect you have a vape in your bag that you are not allowing us to search. We are going to consequence you as if you have a vape. The, speaking of vapes, the next thing we're looking to add is an in-house, currently using that as an example, a student that is caught with a nicotine vape is, earns a one day in school suspension. We are trying to find alternative ways to make sure it is still educational, like they are usually spending the day in the office, teachers are bringing them work, checking in with them, et cetera. You know, we are all part of jobalike groups and I think Carolyn came back from one with a school that is using this kind of tracking sheet where in place of an in-school suspension, the student is allowed to go to school for the day, allowed to go to classes for the day, but has very specific guidelines in terms of where they can be, when they can be there, when they have to arrive in class, et cetera, et cetera. So again, we're just looking for something that is more creative and making sure we're not taking students out of class, but they are understanding, you know, are kind of under a different expectation for that day. So this is just a model of a tracking sheet from a different school that we're hoping to implement. And then the final thing is, as mentioned, we've had a team for two years now that has been working on AI in the school. They have done a lot of research last year in terms of presenting to the faculty on great tools and resources that are out there and how we could use it positively. And then we've had a lot of conversations about how are we making sure that students understand it and we understand it is a world that they're going into. So they have developed both a guide, a student-facing and a teacher-facing guide. And so at this point, this was presented to the faculty in May. Departments spent some time as a department reviewing it and providing the team that worked on it with feedback. They developed this using some models from the college level of what they're doing. And we have had conversation about wanting to add this into our handbook. And it's going to be part of our start of the school year when we do our all-school expectations. We're going to develop something where everyone is presenting the student-facing piece of this to all of the students. And then we'll have it linked, most likely with the acceptable use policy, but figured we had to have some more conversation about that.
Questions? Comments?
Just sort of procedurally, you know, we, I guess we always approve the high school handbook, right, because it's got some things in there. You've got a couple of things that I, I guess these two things that were linked there are kind of work in progress. So if we're voting to approve is the only change that we're approving, the first highlighted there about the consequence line, suspected need for a search and the other is just kind of information at this point?
Yeah, all right. I guess if it, you know, things that you think are appropriate for us to move forward with, if you vote on that or if you just vote on the final? Yeah.
Yeah, well, I guess I thought they were work in progress. They're work in progress. Are they going to be, I know there are things that are entering, but if those things incorporated in the handbook, such that we're approving those, or are they just things we're trying to be included at a future date?
No, we're hoping to have them included in the fall.
You are? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, so to Mark's question, so if there's some things that are still in flight, is there a desire to approve, approve the language now and then come back when the other things are done or wait for it all?
So would you want to see like what our in-house suspension alternative would look like if it's going to be in the handbook?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we plan to go on this model.
But it's not done.
Right. So is there anything that's going to be in the handbook?
But we should probably vote on everything that is before so they can start the year with a handbook.
Yeah, I think we were looking for feedback whether or not, you know, putting something in AI document in the handbook is.
It sounds entirely appropriate, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. No issue there. But we probably should just see the language before we vote on that piece of it.
Yeah.
But I think we can vote on everything else. And then when the language, even if Jim brings it back to us in the fall or whenever you're ready with it.
You'd have to publish before school starts.
We usually publish it, right, within the week before school starts.
So I guess that leaves us as a committee, take two options. One is approve for subject to totally just do it, right?
Yeah.
Knowing the kind of framework and trust in the detail there in the minor, or we have to commit to getting at least a form together to do the final approval. Sometimes it works in terms of our schedule and getting this out.
So in terms of the in-school suspension piece, is there specific language in the handbook that would need to change? Or are you just looking to see if we have any feedback on this? Because I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I don't think there's any language that needs to change. We, or maybe just adding an alternative.
How you're implementing it, like, because that's what I, are there actually any language changes that would need to be made? Or is the language that's currently in the handbook, do you have the discretion to use this model within the language that's already there? We may not need to change it, but I don't know. I don't.
So the use of a tracking sheet, I don't think is a handbook thing, because the handbook would be the things that precipitate in your decision-making of in-school suspension.
So we do alternatives, yeah.
Right. As long as that language gives you the flexibility to figure out what, what in-school suspension will look, because I would imagine for different students it might look different, right? And so as long as it, but I don't know what the language is. So as long as you have enough discretion within that to pick which model is going to work best for each. I love the inclusion of this model, obviously, you know, for the more kids can be in class with still having the right consequences and structure in place to deal with whatever needs to be dealt with, the better. But that won't be right for all students. So obviously you need the discretion to figure that out.
If it's, if it's just utilizing a different, you know, I don't think we've ever looked at it and said, hey, you know, I don't, I don't think it's outlining what those things are going to do, how you're going to administer it. So that one, I don't think we need to vote on at all. The AI one is that's going to be included or linked to and be then have consequences based off that. That would be something I would think we would want to ensure that we do vote on and in the language. So.
Is that, yeah, I'm just looking at it quickly because I didn't get to that before. Is it a guideline or is it a policy? Something that gets incorporated into Paul's point to the handbook and really will be an attachment or an insert to it? Or is it something that's sort of stands alone?
It would be an attachment to the language we already have in there about our expectations about not using it for cheating or plagiarism.
That's already in.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So do you think you're changing the standard or just as sort of elaboration?
Yeah.
You're spelling it out, but it already, the policy.
We just had a lot of conversation about where would be the best place to make sure this is.
Right. I think it is important.
Could we put it in the handbook?
I think it is important to officially link this because it gives a lot more guidance about how students need to use the parameters of what their teacher told them to, because there has been litigation about AI and what the, there was in, you know, one specific case was specifically about, well, it wasn't in the handbook, right? So if we have clear guidelines in the handbook, I think it'll, which this spells it out a little bit more, right?
So, yeah, so, I mean, this can be treated like the other one or can be treated as in like a direct link to the handbook. And if you're doing it that way, I would ask if Jen's reviewed this at all, right? And I mean, I haven't had time to look through this to say, hey, whether I have any questions or objection, I'm assuming you all have and I trust your judgment. So if you're looking to link it, then I think that needs to be voted on because that is essentially then part of the handbook and part of how you're evaluating and then taking action, right? So that's, that's where you're looking to do. You're not looking to use it as, hey, by the way, here's some informative stuff. This is something that's setting expectations that you're going to link directly.
Right.
I read it and I think if there's already something in the handbook that basically says, don't use AI to cheat, or that's framed. To me, this kind of elaborates on that, right? It provides a little more guidance and detail and clarity as to what that might look like, how to know cheating or not cheating.
We might not need to actually take a vote on that.
I think it can go either way. I really do. I think it's sort of, standard is there. This is sort of like we use our model of policy, right? There's a policy and then regulations. It feels like it kind of is a regulation version that goes with it. And I'm honestly, if this were all set to go, I'd just worry about it. I'm just thinking about logistical aspect of it. I think we could go either way.
And the inclusion of it in the handbook means that I think it needs more scrutiny because anytime you, you want things in a handbook or in a policy to be, you don't want to go on and elaborate and go on and on and on about things because that's just more opportunity for things to be contradictory and all those other things. And so conciseness is better, but this helps. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's got a lot of great stuff in there.
Absolutely.
I guess here's, here's a suggestion. It seems like this could go either way. It sounds like to your point, Paul, if this kind of thing hasn't been vetted through council, and I think that's important, we could approve the handbook amended without this included. And if after reviewing it and you get guidance that says it should be included, we can come back and then amend it to include that. So that allows for the possibility of not having to take another action if it's deemed this is sort of an attachment, a guide, a supplement or whatever you want to call it, as opposed to something we need to include. That also gives you the chance to kind of dot the i's, cross the t's, whatever you want to do with it and present it as a final version for approval if we need to do that. I'm sure we get a form together.
Can we do a motion that just says approve pending the approval of council?
Well, I mean.
I want to see the teacher-facing one too, to be honest with you, because I think from my perspective and looking at how I was just talking about like the litigation, like I'm thinking about that case, right? Somewhere in Massachusetts, I don't even remember.
Yeah, so sure.
Yeah. And, and so in, in the student-facing guide, it talks about, you know, looking at, does my, did my teacher allow me to use AI tools? Do I clearly understand when and how, right? So then I would, I would have to look at what guidance did the teacher give? Was that in writing, right? So, so how are the teachers being informed to use this? And do they have to have their own written policies? You know, they all give out a document at the beginning of the year, like here are my expectations, that type of thing. So I would want to see both of them together. Just, and I think it's a great idea to have it kind of vetted, just to make sure, is there anything else we should say in this or based on?
What is the best way though to make sure they start the year with?
Some of the ways it is played out.
Well, but, but to Mark's point, if this doesn't, if you already have the meat in the handbook that says this is cheating.
You have discretion.
Then, if, if you're going to tell me that this was developed as informational, right, and not policy, right, that can be litigated. If it's linked in there and then somebody takes an action and somebody, and then a lawyer goes through this and says, oh, but this one said this, you can't take this action against this student. So if it wasn't written through that lens and then reviewed through that lens, I would be hesitant about adding it if you already had language in the handbook that allows you to take appropriate.
Consequence for when there is, yeah.
And then use this as an informational guide that you can provide to help people make good decisions. And then you'll have the discretion saying, hey, you know, if Joe says, but I followed this and you find an error in it, okay, you handle that at your, at your level and you do the right thing, right? As opposed to this being then scrutinized in a different setting.
Right.
But I do think, I mean, I would, I would honestly err on the policy of including more detail in our, err on the side of including more detail in our policy based on how this has played out in other districts, because that's been the problem is that it's too vague.
Right.
And there's too much like, you know, discre, you know, kind of discretion over figuring out where it fits in. And it's so new and it can be used in so many different ways and show up in, you know, different contexts and, you know, in some ways it is allowed to be used and other ways it's not allowed to be used. So I think.
Or departments have.
Right. And even if this was just as an informational guide, if I was litigating this case, even if it wasn't spelled out in this policy, I would use this as policy because that's what was handed out, right? So I think it, even if it's not policy, it has the effect of giving direction on what the policy means. So I feel like we do need to vet it. Because I think it will be, because it's super helpful. I mean, I think we need to spell it out more, right? Both for teachers and for students.
It looks like a clean document.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it practical to say that when is something, when something is ready, you can get it to us through Jim and that we can figure out how to get a form together so that you can start the year with whatever it is that you need?
I mean, I think, I'm not hearing anything that isn't consensus to saying, hey, even if only three of us can, can be at that, if it's, if it's gone through Jen and everybody's good with it, regardless of which three it is.
We can even get on like a quick Zoom call or whatever. It's just that we can say that we had eyes on it. And, and that way it also gives you the opportunity to have it in time for what you need.
And I think the other reason to have it looked at is I live in this space every day. This is changed, this doc, this document will need to be updated.
Next Wednesday.
Right.
All the time. You're talking about agentic AI. You're talking about agentic AI going, it, it's changing literally daily, right? So that's the other reason to have eyes on it because, you know, and, and maybe Jen even needs to bring in somebody else that, that would have a, a good lens on that because this landscape changes very fast.
So is it, if we're going to need to approve it, well, it seems like people are leaning towards wanting to approve the final version of this document. Do we even need to take a vote? I mean, we'll just deal with it all once.
Well, so, so is, is that, is the clarification, should we do the clarif, the clarification on the last bullet there? And then no matter what hap, because if that's an important thing for the start of school year and let's say that this end, that other document ends up just being informational and not included.
Then we won't have voted on that, right?
Right, we can.
Let's vote on what we can vote on.
Yeah, we can vote on this. And then if you, if that happens later in the year or whatever, then it doesn't really matter.
So I'll move to approve amendment to the high school student handbook to include the language with a consequence in line with the suspected need for a search. In the fifth bullet point, the search and seizure section, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Kelly.
Enjoy your summer.
Yeah. Paul, do you have warrant approval? See you guys.
Good night.
Here goes.
Thank you.
Between May 29th, 2025 and June 11th, 2025, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $286,185.87. This includes general fund expenses of $83,019.19, revolving expenses of $132,210.36, and grant expenses of $70,965.32.
Thank you. Tim, do you have a super?
The only thing I'll report on is I wasn't at graduation. Thanks to the mic for, I was at my own child's graduation, so, thank you.
Hope it went well.
Big news.
It went well. It's been a long week, two weeks, but we got through it. And, but other than that, you know, we're, we're wrapping up the school year. We're done on the 23rd. Many districts are done this week, but I know we're dredging through and getting ready for, for next year already. We've already started having conversations about the budget, conversations about a number of positions that we still need to fill. For the most part, I feel really comfortable with our, with our teaching staff in terms of the, the open positions. I think Pete today recommended two or three teaching positions. So I think actually all teaching positions, with the exception of maybe two special education positions, are completely filled or recommended to be filled. So it's great. So I feel really good about going into the summer with that work. That's all I really have.
Mike?
We had 26 summer curriculum proposals come forward this year, ranging from our new AP physics class to the work that's going to have to be done at the middle school level in particular because of some of the new program that we're going to be offering specifically with our, our new writing class. So we're excited to get folks the notification that the majority of our 26 proposals have been fully approved. Some have only been partially approved, but notification to the staff will go out on Friday regarding those. MCAS is finally completed despite some of our technological challenges that we had over the course of the last couple of weeks. Thanks to our amazing IT staff who has been working really hard to help keep us, keep us rolling. And all our benchmarking for K to eight, our I-ready assessment data that has to take place is almost completed K to eight. We are working hard to make sure we have all those things finished up by the end of the school year to be able to provide us some good data to see what our student growth was in those areas. All of our evaluations have been shared for our teaching staff, finishing up some other evaluations in terms of some administrative folks, but all teacher evaluations have been shared. And just a quick professional learning update, it was really a successful school year in terms of our, our top priority was really to talk about safety this year. And our, I'm feeling really confident with the work that was done this year, especially in the area of implementing our protocols and procedures for Alice. Now, next year, our focus is going to get really back on instruction in how we are incorporating MTSS strategies to make sure we are fully meeting the goals that we've set for our district. While I feel very confident in the fact that what's happening at the Warren School is, they are rolling in terms of MTSS. And now it's time to make sure we have a full district implementation. So one of the things that we're going to be doing this summer, our entire, our entire administrative team was provided with a book called Demystifying MTSS, A School and District Framework for Meeting Students Academic and Social Emotional Needs. As a team, as an administrative team, we'll be reading that book over the summer together to, to fully present and prepare some real high-quality professional development, some in-house professional development for our staff, where we're all speaking the same language when it comes to MTSS. We thought long and hard about bringing somebody in from the outside, but after talking to some administrators and some staff members, they felt like it will be stronger and more impactful for us if it's really done in-house. And we're, and we're, so we've decided to go that book route. And I'm, I'm excited to see what's going to happen with our administrative team to just really put ourselves at the forefront of this, make sure everybody is really speaking the same language. Our first-year teacher program was a tremendous success this year. We celebrated them today. We had 12 folks that were just wonderful additions to our staff and we're looking forward to inviting them all back next year for year two. And then I, I have to talk about the amazing class of 2025. Our, our senior week was just a tremendous success, highlighted by our senior banquet where we had a tremendous young man speak. Noah George was, was selected to address the, the student body at our senior banquet. And then that was followed by class day where we heard from our salutatorian Garrett Wolfram. And we listened to Vana Baxarian sing a beautiful song. And then graduation was a wonderful night of celebration for our seniors. Valedictorian Ragavai Ayar did a great job, as well as Claire Dempsey and class president Amy Cardozo. Joseph Ramirez sang. And it was really just a, a really nice night to celebrate an amazing group that we wish well.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we have nutrition services, proposed meal cost increase. Hello.
You should have this document in the folder.
Yeah.
Yep.
The propose, yes. So the proposal tonight is for nutrition services to have three meal price increases. One for adult meals, one is for student meals, the second meal, and then also à la carte. As you all know, meals are free for all, so each student receives one free breakfast and one free lunch. But we need to increase prices for, for those meals. So the, the adult meal proposal, the DESI gives us guidelines to kind of come up with a, a bottom line, so to speak, of how to come up with an adult-priced meal. I receive federal reimbursement through the, for my student meals. One of those prices for a free meal, a student who's eligible for free is $4.30. Then the USDA food value meal price is added to that and then state tax. So that all added together would come to be $4.95. The adult meal now is $4.25, it'd be a 70 cents increase. So that's that one. I don't know if you want to agree on this or vote on this, or shall I proceed?
We can do it all at once, yeah, thank you.
And then the second meal price, I do not receive any reimbursement for second meals. I get reimbursement for one breakfast and one lunch. So because it's free meals for all, many students purchase a second meal. So we need to increase those because of increase in labor, food, paper goods, and other expenses. So we're proposing now the elementary is $2.75. We propose we would make that $3 per student and then secondary is $3. We're proposing that would be $3.25. And then for the à la carte or second entree price, that would not include a milk, fruit, or vegetable. It's just for the entree. Many students, once again, because they're not paying for a meal, they'll come back for that second slice of pizza, a second burger, things like that. So once again, food's going up, labor's going up, paper's going up. We'd like to increase that. So we thought we would just take the 50% kind of benchmark. But the, the students would be 160 for a second entree and adults would be 190. So, but once again, due to increases in costs and also to go along, be compliant with my DESI requirements, I need to request for these increases.
Do you have any questions or concerns about that?
Will these increases account for the total increase in your costs? Or is there still an additional amount that, in terms of the, you know, you mentioned here the labor, the food price and stuff? Will this cover it?
Yes, it will. It will, it will make a difference. And then also, once again, I receive my reimbursements for all the meals that we are serving. Since 2019, pre-COVID, we have more than doubled the meals that we are serving. Our participation goes up every year. I don't know where all these more students are coming from.
They're hungrier.
We keep on thinking, okay, we've hit it, we've hit the mark. But they just keep buying more meals. So, yeah, so my, my costs have been covered. But this other additional increase will help cover the, the costs that are going up.
I have a general sort of programmatic question, not really about this specifically. So now that every student has access to free meal, is there any different treatment for students who are still all like free and reduced? Do those students have an ability to get, for example, the second entree at no cost or reduced cost? Or is it, it's basically everybody's free the first time and you want something more?
Yes, so the federal guidelines are each breakfast, each student receives one breakfast, one lunch. So an additional entree is an added charge.
I thought, figure that.
Oh, that's a good question.
Yes. Any other questions?
Nope.
It's reasonable to me.
To approve the increases in the student and adult meal prices as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks for your patience.
Come back anytime.
Good night.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, is that time of year again? This is actually our last meeting of this school year, which I really can't believe how. The track, the track. Oh, want to do the track first?
It doesn't really matter when you do it.
Best interest of these girls going.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, you can put it wherever you want.
I was going to say, is, is evaluation going to be hinged on it or?
Yeah.
I just don't want to forget it.
We're not going to forget, I have it, I have it on my screen.
Okay, we'll do this first. I, I will remind folks, if you haven't followed along, or even if you have, just a reminder of the process. We're here, school committee members. One of our jobs is to evaluate the superintendent. The cycle includes us usually getting together at some point prior to the school year and starting to get some big picture goals in place for the district or some longer-term goals. And then we will formulate some goals with Jim, our superintendent, usually in the beginning of the year, the goals that he wants to reach, either that will be completed in this year or sometimes they are goals that take several years. And somewhere during the middle of the year, we check in just to make sure we're on track. And at the end of the year, which is where we are now, the school committee evaluates Jim. This is called the summative evaluation. And the way that it works is that each school committee member fills out their own individual evaluation. But we present, everything's tabulated and calculated and it's presented to Jim as an evaluation from the committee. And it's a combination of the ratings that were offered by each, each member here. So I will take a moment to read the results. Hopefully you guys all got everything. I'm, I'm not going to go through the, the rubric or any of that, but I will read the results of the, of all of your input. Mr. Adams continues to be an asset to our district and community. His leadership is rooted in building strong relationships that facilitate communication and collaboration. Jim is a conscientious and thoughtful leader who is always striving to improve. He is self-aware, communicative, and thoughtful. For the 2024-2025 school year, Jim's been rated overall as proficient while receiving several exemplary ratings as well. He continues to excel in many areas. Although the model district is our goal, we inherently know that goal is always a work in progress. We have as a school district leaned into the idea of continuous student improvement in all its forms for many years and at all levels. Many of Jim's goals this year are therefore ongoing, longer-term goals that won't be completed in a calendar year. The district continues to progress under his leadership. Specifically, Jim has excelled at prioritizing social emotional development, working towards curriculum alignment, and in particular with the budget, which we expect to become increasingly challenging. It's evident that Jim cares deeply about our students, staff, and entire school community. And his presence at district and school events and building walkthroughs, meetings, and other events reinforce his commitment and accessibility. Jim has successfully strengthened family and community engagement by promoting open communication, building partnerships, and creating inclusive opportunities for involvement. There are several community events across each school throughout the year. To highlight a few this year that have returned or are new, Pittaway implemented parent coffees to support new parents on topics facing their students and to help transitions into school. Warren continues to hold a number of school spirit events. Mendis held its science symposium in the spring with a record number of presenters from the community, getting students excited about STEM. AMS returned to having full school assemblies for the first time since COVID. AHS held a successful community service day in the fall, volunteering at several local businesses and town offices. Significant progress was also made in the middle school with upcoming schedule changes and increases in school spirit and exciting student workshops. At the high school, progress was made in decreasing student absenteeism and the inclusion of successful community service days. The committee is also pleased to see advancements in special education and English language acquisition. Our district continues to make significant progress towards our strategic goals. This is in large part to Mr. Adams' leadership and the culture his leadership cultivates, and we look forward to continuing to work with Mr. Adams. So hopefully, everybody feels that that encapsulates what we've been working with Jim for a while now. And your work continues to be.
Laurie, you've got the overall's provision.
Yes.
The, the rating points are usually on the goals themselves.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't write this out, but there is a place in the, in the evaluation that I sent, and I will get it up to say whether the, which goals were met and which goals had significant progress and so forth. But I do need to call that up.
Yeah, because you, because you typically do one of the rubrics combining the.
I did. And it's in, the evaluation that is the committee evaluation to Jim has that page. And I'm happy to read it aloud, but I need, I need to get, get it.
No, for me, if you can send it out that way.
I think it's like, if we're accepting overall, overall evaluation.
The one that's like that one.
Composite.
If you can just get to the page that has the goals.
Right, yeah, we, we definitely need the rubric itself.
Yeah, within, within the rubric was the page that had. I think that might be my evaluation. This would not be mine, this would be the one from the committee. Have it as well, but I just.
Laurie's doing that. I just want to acknowledge Laurie's work in putting this together. Big given, I didn't get anything till about 7:30 this morning.
Thank you, Laurie.
You incorporated some of my thoughts into the, appreciate the process for.
This is how the, I'm sorry, Jim, that didn't come through. This is how the committee rated the goals as, as a group. On the resource management goal by May 2025, each school, now it's my eyesight that's the issue, will conduct at least two safety drills. You want me to read the whole goal and you guys get the?
No, I think that's the rating.
That goal was met. The next goal, superintendent will review our current district policy. The next goal, superintendent will review our current district policies, that we've made significant progress on that goal. Paul and I are the policy committee. We've been meeting consistently with Jim on that. And it's, the only reason why it hasn't met is because it's gonna take, it's one of the goals that's gonna take longer than a year, but we have been consistently working on that. The next goal, working with the Ashland Middle School to develop and implement the new master schedule, that has been met, as we've heard from Erin tonight and throughout the year. The next one, in collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent, the Ashland Education Association, reviewing procedures associated with the educator evaluation, significant progress on that. And the next one was, I've checked two boxes, because some of us checked two boxes and some of us, Jim rated himself as not having met that goal, just because the Henry Warren SOI did not happen and there are reasons why it didn't happen. But some of us said significant, not significant progress, some progress, because we took steps to look into whether or not we could do that this year. So, we, but again, that is obviously remains on the list. It's something that we're working towards. The next one, during the 2024-2025 school year, press releases, social media posts, and a minimum of two in-depth spotlights to students, faculty, staff. So, that's, we made some progress on that. Jim had highlighted that communication. We're gonna be reevaluating how we do some of that with, and which personnel we will be using for that. And then finally, in collaboration with the Assistant Superintendent, the superintendent will create systems to implicate the consistent MTSS, and there's been some progress made on that. And again, the ones, I just want to clear, be clear again, where there are some progress or significant progress, the, the intent always was that it was gonna take a little bit longer than. But that is the compilation of what we all said. Some of us, they were pretty consistent.
But on the four standards.
The standards.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
That's what we're reporting.
Four standards. The four standards were all proficient. That's why he was, he received multiple exemplary ratings within that, within the categories. But that's how the majority ruled on that.
But all the exemplars were spread between the, the standards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct. Yeah, or, you know, some people might have had exemplaries in an entire category, but when it's a compilation and it's the whole committee, I'm adding them all up and just, whatever the majority voted, that's what the evaluation says. But I, and this continues to be true for Jim. I mean, he's always earning multiple exemplaries from, from us all the time. So, it's.
I'm gonna throw a needs improvement.
Yeah.
You should.
So, all to say that we continue to be pleased with your work, Jim, obviously. And we're glad you're here and we thank you for all you do and I hope you feel appreciated because we do appreciate it.
I do. And I've said this every year I've been superintendent, you know, we're fortunate, we have a great team. And I think the goals and, you know, the standards that are being met, it's because of the team that's doing the work underneath this, right? Maybe we can organize it, I can organize it, Mike can organize it, but if we don't have the right people in place to do the work and do it well, we're not gonna make progress. And we're very fortunate, we have, you know, I think about Erin this year at the middle school, right? That's a prime example of someone we've identified and we've groomed along the way as an educator, you know, administrator, and recognizing the fact that she's got a lot of talent and someone we want in our district who can do that work and do, make really hard choices, but do it in such a way that everyone feels, you know, their, their opinions are valued. So, unfortunate, I think that's, as we all do, I probably rated myself harder than any one of you did, but I think some of the challenges we had with the communication, we certainly have to revisit. Mike and I have had these conversations. How do we go about getting the messaging out, considering how we approach the director's position this year in terms of budget cut? And thinking we can, we can do a good job with this or a better job with this, the two of us. So, but, yeah, overall, pleased, certainly, with the progress we're making.
And I know you'll always deflect and the team is, and the team is doing the work, but as you said, we have a talented team, which means they have options. The idea that they routinely want to stay here for as long as they have, we probably set some kind of record for longevity of, of our administrative staff and talented administrative staff that has other options. So, that's just a testament to the culture and the team that you build and foster, a true team that wants to stay together. So, that's, that's on you.
Thank you.
And I think it's a point where I would say, you get credit for the team you build, right? And you've done a phenomenal job building that team.
Right.
That's a reflection on, on decision making that you don't make alone, that you take charge for.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we just need to move to approve. Approve, not.
No, I think approved is somewhat of a valuation.
The ratings and the overall.
Did everybody feel like their input was represented?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks for doing that, as always.
I move to approve the superintendent's Summit of Evaluation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Do you want to move the track now up to?
Get some good stuff.
Get these girls to Pennsylvania.
Yeah, so.
So excited.
Yeah, I don't know anything about it. What happened?
So, over the weekend, you know, in the MIA Meet of Champions, our, our girls, 4800 Relay Team, which did set a new school record, qualified for the national event, the New Balance has a, a meet, a national meet. So, we have three young ladies, four, excuse me, four. Obviously, four by eight. Yeah, obviously, right?
Three juniors.
Yeah, Eva Dittenhofer, Sadie Ghoulie, Madeline Callahan, and Sophia Wartnitzki are the four ladies.
Some of my Make-A-Wish papers.
Who we represent, representing Ashland. It's, the, the meet takes place on the 20th of June, so that's next week. And they have to leave on the 19th. It's an overnight trip. The four, they'll be transported by Emily Riley, the coaches, have a hotel room. I know the families, the parents are going. I received a couple of requests already from those families. And that's, again, we didn't get it on the agenda because it just happened over the weekend and the agenda was already posted.
I make the motion to approve the girls to go kick butt at the national.
Is that a requirement?
National meet at Penn State.
I'm not, the school, the school committee voted they have to kick butt.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did tell Mary Callahan she had to be back. She's supposed to be a Cal Umit.
Right, I know.
Key of Cal Umit is that she and my son.
On the 19th, she's supposed to go, yeah.
She and my son are counselors there together with Jack as well. So, as I said, she has to be there directly from Pennsylvania to Oscebe, New Hampshire. We're all good there.
It's right on the way.
It is on the way.
All right, good stuff. Policies.
Yeah. That's good stuff. So, you'll notice the, the first set of policies, A through E, it's, I, I put them here and I believe we can vote on these without having first and second reads, if you will. They are policies that had very little change. MAS C in 2022, I just set out new updated policies. So, I've included them here as red lines and you'll notice, I'll just pull them up if you want.
I didn't see the red lines.
I know, I don't see any red lines on mine either.
They're in.
Is that all it is, is just the blue?
No, so, I don't know why it doesn't show up in yours, but let me just, I can pull it up here.
Okay.
And just so you can see it. Some of them did have changes and some didn't. Where's my sharing here? Share. Okay. So, for example, does that show up? Is a red line on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, so this is policy BBA, School Committee Powers and Duties. The red line, obviously, here was our current policy versus what the MAS C was requesting was, you know, basically here was just bold formatting, but they added the Personnel Matters in terms of, you know, who the school committee can appoint by law. We didn't have that in here. And that's, this is what they were adding. Superintendent, yeah, that's right. Superintendent shall be appointed by, by the committee, directly reported to the committee. And then below, the, the appointment of the school committee deals with certain roles, assistant superintendents, school business administrator, specialized administrator, physician, school nurse. We don't have a supervisor of attendance, but that's there. So, this is just one thing we didn't have in our initial policy. They just added it.
I'm just, I'm, I'm surprised, I'm looking at these and I'm not seeing changes.
Yeah, I mean, they don't show up on mine either, even though it's called red line. It's called red line, but it doesn't show up.
It should be in the file and it should show it, but.
I think, I think you might need to.
But you can see it on the screen. I'll pull them up either way.
Basically, these are all MAS C changes based on their legal.
Yeah, I looked at them in clean form and they were fine, so I'm not worried about it.
Yeah, I know it is easier when you can see what's changed.
So, here's the red line of employment of principals.
But just for context, like, the, the policy committee did not change any language. It was recommended.
So, current certification, they call it licensure now. There was, that's, or, and the pronouns, his, their, her, you know, to their. That was the only change. Red line of the professional staff salary schedules. The administrators here, basically, just, it cleaned this language up and deleted this. Salaries will be reviewed annually prior to July 1. Up here, it just talks about salaries will be reviewed annually prior to July 1. It was, it was duplicative. Moved the word administration up to principal.
Instead of making it two separate.
Correct, instead of two separate spots. That's all it was. And this was the last red line, School Committee Member Qualifications, Oath of Office. They added, they, they got rid of town, you know, we should keep, you know, in our, we are a town, but they, they used municipal or district and I just, I don't mind keeping it with just town because we are a town, you know? But, but they added this in here, that newly qualified committee members shall, by law, receive and sign a receipt for, within 30 days of taking office, a copy of the Ethics Commission's Summary of Conflict of Interest Law. So, just clarify exactly what you need to do if we have a new member. Those were the red lines. I'm sorry, it doesn't show up in your.
These are first reads too.
Well, they're.
These, right?
These are, these are first reads, other, but what I'm saying is, I think we could still approve them without having an additional, they're not materially.
Well, yeah, but when you said first reads, I.
Yeah, sorry.
Thought that was implying that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
You need to.
No, no. So, those are the.
But if people don't have any concerns about those minor changes.
Right. And the only one I didn't bring up, I think, was the employment of principals. Let me just show you that one. Oh, yeah, it was, I did. Licenseur and there, yeah, that was it, yeah.
Do them all.
Do them all.
I move to approve policy BB, School Committee Legal Status, policy BBA, School Committee Policy and Duties, policy BBBA slash BBBB, School Committee Member Qualification slash Oath of Office, policy GCBA, Professional Salary, I'm sorry, Professional Staff Salary Schedule, and policy GCBB, Employment of Principals, as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next group are the second reads, which means they've already been presented to us, so if most of you have some problems or questions between then and now.
And these have been vetted by council. I had it, I did before.
Go for it, Mark.
Gresham will be appreciative.
I move to approve policy JH, Student Absence and Excuses, policy JHD, Exclusions and Exemptions from School Abundance, policy JIC, Student Discipline, policy JICF-A, Prohibition of Hazing, policy JICFA-E, Hazing, policy JICFB, Bullying Prevention, policy JIH, Searches and Interrogations, and the policy JII, Student Complaints and Grievances, all as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Consent agenda?
That was an easy one.
You want to do second and really just mess up?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Uh, so, we are coming up on the end of the school year. It's been a long journey, but we all, we all made it. We.
You're senior now.
Oh, yeah.
Not yet.
Once they're out of the building, once they graduate, you're.
Ranking, ranking officials.
But we did have the seniors just graduate. We had a very successful class day and graduation, as Mr. Kyra mentioned. And it's sad to see them go, but they're all on to better, better things now. We are now looking forward to finals week and, once that's over, we're slowing down and ready to sleep in for summer.
Ibernee?
Yeah.
Um, I don't have any of my own things because I've been running around to many fields, but I did want to give a shout out to the Reality Fair, although I didn't get to attend. I heard many, many good things about it and I'm happy that people aren't so budgeted.
Yeah, and who was there? You were there? You were there? You were there? Yeah, thank you. You guys are awesome.
Sounded like it was great. I'll try to go next year. Yeah, it's my favorite event. So, that was on my, my list as well, too. I always love having conversations with the students as they come through and they're excited and curious and thoughtful and kind of how they're looking at things. And it's just, it's fun to see them have kind of some of their own aha moments and, and it's just a fun day, like, it's a really great day. Definitely volunteer next year if you're able to fit it in. Oh, I know them also. Well, that's, that's even more fun when you know all the kids coming through. So, and obviously, graduation was this weekend. We've heard a lot about that already. The, I was able to attend AshPAC's last meeting of the year, last Wednesday, and as they were kind of, you know, wrapping things up, they're doing a lot of planning for next year. I know, Mike, they were gonna reach out to you, talk about professional development next year and share their thoughts and, and whatnot, so expect an email. And we also talked, you know, they brought up a few different things that, you know, they wanted me to share with the committee. One, I know, Jim, you had, you know, heard from Christine and had the opportunity to chat with her about the hiring committees. And so, you know, they were curious and, and hopeful to get kind of more specific direction about what the policy is for when there is a hiring committee pulled together for different administrative positions that they would be able to be a part of or what that would look like. And I know that you've had the opportunity to, to, to respond to Christine about that. And, you know, in terms of thinking forward about Unified Sports and, and how that plays out. And, you know, there were, I think there were a few hiccups this year with things around transportation and, and whatnot. And so, you know, they shared, you know, kind of some of their thoughts with me about that, which I will certainly pass on in conversations with Jim, so they can be a part of the greater conversation with Kevin and the administration. And that was, oh, one other thing, although I wasn't there, I, you know, one of the, Brian Konig brought one of the middle school bands or a middle, a group of middle school students to a band competition this past weekend, and they won platinum, which is like higher than gold. I think it's the first time they participated in this in many, many years.
Where was it?
I don't, they got to go to Canterbury Lake Park after the event, so I, and I have to be honest with you, I don't know all of the details. I just heard about it through the AMA, the Ashland Music Association. So.
That's great news.
Yeah, so I don't, all I know is that they did really, really well.
They had a great concert last night as well. It was, I did attend, my brother was there. So, they had a nice concert. They're playing beautifully and it's gonna be nice seeing them in the high school band.
Yeah, absolutely. The jazz ensemble did a phenomenal job last week as well, too. They had a, actually, a parent stepped up to, to lead the middle school jazz ensemble this year. And at their concert, they had a, a full jazz band. They had a young, a student who was singing and it was just a really phenomenal performance all around, yeah.
And the band and chorus at graduation, I mean, we have such talent here, really. Yeah.
So, I attended the high school awards night, went to the Reality Fair. Kudos to the organizers, Sarah and Josh, that it's a ton of work and it's been improving every year. that it's a ton of work, and it's been improving every year. Thank you, I'm tuning it and making it better every year, so look forward to next year. Also, obviously, went to graduation, so kudos to everybody, and Mike did a great job, you know, I'm seeing that, and I'm always impressed with how well you cite. I would butcher literally 70% of the names. You do a fantastic job.
That's kind of how long you take to sit there.
Yeah. When you all, you all do that, and it's, it's pretty, pretty great, so. So, yeah, I think that's, that's the majority of the.
And I echo the same things. I was at the Reality Fair, and so the transportation booth, my favorite thing was with these kids who were coming up, and, "Well, I'm going to live in Oak Square," right, I guess. "I'm going to have a car." "Drive your car every time you go downtown," because they made a T-pass, too. "Let's go look at how much that all costs." "Then we'll leave the car at home." Every one of them, like, it's probably good.
That's why they called it a reality fair.
That's right. It was a lot of fun doing that, and also kind of having fun with the kids because for those who don't participate, they get their credit scores based on their attendance. So you're able to say, hmm, maybe you might have had a better choice and look at the difference in terms of what your car payment might be versus somebody else if you had gone to class, you know? But what's that? They're sort of on time, yeah. But it was a lot of fun, and I think for a number of us who've got kids that are in and around these age groups that are graduating, you know a good number of the kids. I can remember someone, like, "This kid looks familiar." One who, Mikey Flynn, who I coached baseball, like, in first grade. Matthew and he were on the same team. "Oh, that's where, like, you know, I don't really know him otherwise." So it was just great to kind of see through that hand graduation. Or, when you remember them when they were 10, 11, 9, whatever it was. Just a lot, it's my favorite time of year, you know?
I went to class day and graduation, great job, everybody.
Like, really, I love the gusto with what you do. It's just the energy that goes into it, I think.
He's got the MC vibe.
And it was really special to see you because this is the first class that, with you from kindergarten, you moved to Mendez with them. You, you really did, and it was very clear. Right, it was really clear what a special place they held in your heart, and it was very, it was really heartwarming.
That was nice.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a, it's an honor to be able to do that.